Welcome Commissioners, 2023. Yay, glad everybody survived the new year. We do have to do some housekeepings. One of the first things before we get to changing the agenda, number H needs to be scratched because I guess I took a template from the past that showed that we were supposed to have a vice chair for the finance and I guess we've never had that. So we're going to scratch number H before we get to the approving the agenda because we do have an addition when we get to that part. But I do need you to first take your own office and I will have I will take a picture and you're ready for writing.
Excuse me, David, I want to get our picture here.
So if you would say I do and not I don't.
Let us closer to each other.
No, that's fine. You've got your paper. I think he could see you. We're going to get a picture at the end, Jan, so that I can send it to the newspaper. So I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of County Commissioner in and for the county of Grashit, the state of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities.
I do.
I do.
So there are two copies at your stop if you could sign and one copy will be. Don't let Mike know I gave it to somebody. Yeah, I'll get them at the end. So, so our first order of business, Commissioner Bailey, are you here?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting. Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
And will you stand with me? And George, would you give that indication?
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us blessings in it. We just.
Heavenly Father, you be with us during our meeting tonight that we can do the best things for our folks in Grashit County. Praise for Jesus' name and pray, amen.
Thank you. And if you'll join me with a pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. So our first order of business is to elect a chairperson for our board. And so I am requesting, do we have any nominations?
I nominate Sam Smith.
All right, any more nominations? Any more nominations? So we have a motion on the floor to nominate Sam Smith and I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
I will hand the gavel to you.
The next part of our agenda is election for a vice chair. We have any nominations for vice chairperson of the board?
I nominate Jan Bunting.
I'd second that. I nominate George Bailey.
I'll second that.
And so.
We do roll call for Jan Bunting first and then.
Do a roll call for Jan. Angie will do that.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Oh.
Next we'll have appoint a chairman for the finance chairperson.
I nominate. I nominate.
Excuse me, Mr. I believe that might be a chair appointment.
So it's by majority vote, request for nomination by the vice chair. Election of vice chair request.
In our rules of organization, our by statute, I don't think that this is something like.
By the chairman with the confidence of the board.
The finance chair?
Yeah. Yes.
With the full support of the board or the support of the.
By the chairperson consent of the board.
We should take a vote. I take my second back.
Okay, so I don't know if you want to do that, given that I don't know if the chairs had the opportunity to sit at that position, given that the election has just occurred. If you want to do that tonight or if you would like to set that over to the next meeting.
I guess I would appoint George Bailey. For the person.
I second.
So we have the consent of the board to do that. Are we need to vote on that?
Angie, how should consent occur?
So a request for a motion to approve after the chairperson has.
Appointed.
Appointed. So I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Bunting.
Yes.
Okay, we're taking H out. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I would ask that we add an item M four, entitled executive search. That has provided materials to each of you that to which I'll be referring in that discussion.
Any other additions or deletions? All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Anything you'd like to take out of the consent calendar? Okay, that first. Okay, yes, right now I have brief comments from the public. Anybody online, Matt?
No, somebody is online right now.
Okay. The consent calendar, you had some.
Yes. July 4th is on a Tuesday this year and I hope that they have it on July 4th.
If you look in the packet, you'll see a schedule.
And.
And there's a schedule in our packet.
The consent calendar, perhaps, Mr. Chair, what we would want to do is have that be part of the discussion at M three.
It's in there. It's in, it's going to be addressed, it'll be addressed. It'll be addressed.
Yeah.
Address there. I'm not sure how I got it here, but. It's in the, it's in the other one. It's in the packet here, Holiday Kelly, M three.
Yeah, I added that. And no, and that, and the meetings.
In the meetings.
And two will be, and two will show that.
Yeah, if here's a holiday.
Got it on the chip, but I think Tim said we'd like it on Thursday.
Well, let's, let's just get it on the agenda.
Yeah, it's in here.
Discuss it there. It's at M three, discussing holidays. My, my agenda says the meeting schedule is M two. Perhaps I have a different agenda.
You said M three, so it is M two. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So we won't move that out of there. Anything else we approve the agenda then?
Yep. So I think we just approved it.
Yeah, we did. Okay.
I have a motion by Owens. Second.
Need a second.
Can we say?
All in favor? Okay, so we're down to Tracy.
Yes. I wish everyone a happy new year and I offer a special welcome to our new commissioners, Commissioner Gay, Commissioner Owens. We've got a great opportunity to have a listen and participate for a little while. Quite some time ago, I had contact with representatives of Utopia Power on their small solar developer. Their representatives and I toured the landfill one day years ago. And they had expressed some interest in the project. A lot of these projects have not moved simply because they just don't pencil out, but now because of some federal incentives, you're going to see some movement on some, some solar projects. And we did recently have Utopia contact us again showing their interest. They have interest in addressing this board, just introducing themselves, telling you a little bit about their company. If they're familiar with the landfill and as much as they have toward it. I have taken the liberty of scheduling them to come and speak with you at the next meeting, January 17th. I indicated that Zoo was an option, but I've been told that they would like to come personally and meet you. So you'll be meeting Forrest Com and others with that organization. Greater Grashit and I did have contact with another developer, quite a bit larger. They were going to be doing some internal calculations and discussions about a number of Grashit County projects. I believe that's underway, but I haven't heard back from them too recently. So just know that there is some renewed interest and some activity on these projects. And I think that can only mean good things for Grashit County. Next is retirement season. I've asked to have the executive search issue bumped up for a further discussion later during our meeting this evening. But you're also aware that Prosecutor Keith Cushing has given his notice of his intent to retire at the end of March of this year. Midterm vacancies, as perhaps you know, prosecutor positions are handled by the circuit judges. There is no real role for a county board or other county elected officials. I exchanged messages with Chief Circuit Judge Lisa Sullivan. And we've had reached an agreement about who would provide support to that effort. She has agreed that it would be primarily Jennifer Wood, the court administrator. And but of course, Sheila Barnaby, our HR officer, will offer any support that Jennifer Wood might need. So my question for you, again, by statute, this board has no role in the selection of prosecutors under these circumstances. I wondered though, that if given the the fact that the circuit judges that do tours of duty here are actually based in Clinton County or from Clinton County, if you want to find some way of having some input as to selection. There are any number of ways that that could go. It could be a letter signed by each of you, offering your input. These are the things that are important to the citizens of Grashit County as you see it as their representatives. I don't know, have verified a letter with the same, I haven't spoken with the sheriff about this or both. Or, you know, this is a little bit out there and there's certainly nothing, or asked to have a non-voting seat at the table during interviews. You designate someone to do that. There is nothing in the statute that allows for that, but there is everything in the statute that prohibits that. So I wanted to get that idea in front of you. I don't know if you would like to discuss that or if we want to talk about it next time. But I do believe that those folks will get that process kicked off at some point here. Judge Sullivan did already communicate with two other circuit judges about, okay, the first thing you do is you kind of set a meeting to set the rules of the game, most of the process and so forth. So I offer you that. Should it be something that you'd like to discuss? And.
How quick would that be done, you think, by them? I mean, just really on their own timeframe, pretty much?
On time frame, but I think that they would, certainly they would have someone in place at the time they.
At the end of March, was it?
Yeah, March 31st.
And what is it you think we could offer? I guess I look at the court system. I don't know if I know a lot about the court system or who I, who I think ought to be this person. I mean, I know they probably have to live in our county and.
Well, they don't have to live in.
You don't have to, but to run for election next time they would have to. Oh, they don't.
This is a shared circuit. We are a combined circuit with Clinton County, not district level or the probation court, but at the circuit court level we are. And in fact, the two judges that serve here, they alternate weeks. And they go to the office upstairs and then they go back home to town. So they don't break sight in this county.
I'm not talking about the judges. I'm talking about the person they would appoint.
Oh.
Would have to be a resident of this county. Maybe not now, but two years from now if they were going to run.
They would have to be a resident even now. That's the qualification.
I see, okay.
Forgive me, I thought you were talking about.
I know the judges where they live, yeah. I know that.
So, no, that's, yeah. The prosecutor that would be appointed midterm has to meet all the same qualifications as stands for election. You know, so resident of the town and so forth.
How's everybody feel about having a seat at the table there or asking for a seat?
You look at it and what the prosecutor does, even holds sway over the county commissioners on what we have to deal with and how we deal with it. And if, and if, we've always had a good rapport with our prosecutor. Anytime we've had a question or did anything with that office, we've always had a good rapport. And I would want to make sure and ensure that the county commissioners still had a good rapport with the new prosecutor. But that's the way I look at it.
I think George just volunteered to be on that.
I got the time.
Me on it too. But to know, is he recommending anybody? I, I would think in his mind that he might have somebody in mind that might.
I think he has some assistance here, so.
But, but ultimately it's for the appointing members of the commission to make that decision. So it's not a, he gets to pick, any of, get to pick your successor. So, excuse me, Tim, I think I interrupted you.
Yeah, well, I think the sheriff could be involved, of course, in this because you're the one that's going to be working with.
I ended up running the prosecutor every day and I might say it's, it's getting pretty shallow though, because you have to have the, has to have an attorney degree or law degree. And they have to live within the county. So that, that, that means you're tall, rather small, that you're going to be able to pick from. So. But yes, I'd absolutely do it if they wanted me to help out.
I can write a letter for your signature or I can, you, just to start, we said we want to have a seat at the table and that this board would designate that person. Just tell me what to do. But I don't think getting, getting them to agree to three of you is very, I'm going to suggest. And someone who might be familiar with the attorneys in this county. You folks said prosecutor, I don't know how familiar you are with the bar.
I don't know anybody in this office. I know Keith, but I don't know the way anybody in this.
Lawyers of the community. It does have to be criminal.
Yeah, I know, I know a few of them. I know a lot of lawyers, but.
Anybody with a bar degree or law degree, a member of.
So we want to, we want to ask to see if George could have a seat at the table, a non-voting seat? Chris, you would take care of something?
I'll, I'll write a letter indicating that I've been asked to contact.
Okay.
That way this request.
We also going to do something for, for his retirement?
For the prosecutor? Then I have a softness or something like that, I would imagine.
I think the bar association probably reduces that.
Yeah, that concludes my dispensary.
I'll take back on Utopia Power. So they, they have, they have looked at our landfill site. But they have a little bit of interest there.
Yeah, they, they did, yeah. And the fact that they bring in content also made that they continue to. It's infusion of money, so it doesn't hurt.
Well, I think you're seeing, I mean, even billboards up, our consumers are looking at buying property or coming in and, you know, you're seeing billboards like, you own the ground, give us a call type of thing. Just briefly for, for you guys, we had looked a while ago. We, we own a landfill here. What is it? Forty something acres, fifty something?
Oh, it's over eighty acres.
Ground where the landfill is and it costs us probably fifty, sixty grand a year to maintain it. And so we're trying to, if we could put some solar out there and not break into it, offset the cost. That's what we've been looking at over the years. And when they were real hot on it a couple of years ago, then they kind of walked away, but I think they have some renewed interest in that. Is that a trace?
Yes.
Without a consideration of new business, it looks like we have bad the rules of organization.
The administrators reports tonight, I gather, Angie.
We just did you.
Oh, the commissioners? Yeah, I did because there wasn't, they just, there's no meetings really that they attended beginning of the year. So I did take that off. I'm sorry.
All in the agenda.
Yeah, committing, weren't supposed to be your commissioner report after Tracy's.
Okay, rules of organization. The document was included in your board habit. Document is one that is Grashit County document. It's not something that is given to you by the state of Michigan or the federal government. What it does is it just provides some of the rules and the local processes for the governing of the conduct of your meetings and the governance here in the county. That said, there is an awful lot in this document that really does just parallel state statute. When I arrived a few years ago now, this document was over twenty-eight page. It says, I just called through it and all the things that just follow the statute I either just got to know because there really is not an option to not follow state statute. And also if there's any entities of organization that conflict with state statute, statute controls. So so this document gets thinner, thinner, could be thinner yet, but that's what this document does. Each year I go through it and look at what needs to be updated, what can be eliminated, what might be an error I hadn't thought six years prior. And this is presented and approved, reviewed, approved, has been approved at this first meeting and the organizational meetings. In keeping with pretty standard ways in which documents are marked up, text that is in bold font and underlined is new text or new words. And language that is in bold and is stricken is language that proposed to be taken out. So for example, on page four, which is the first page of the actual, actual text, you'll see in the second paragraph, it says, no rule of the board of commissioners and so on. And you will see the word county there. That's what was to be a new word. And you'll see board of in bold font and stricken. And so I'm proposing that language be removed. Now, what I'm really doing there is just renaming or properly naming the board. But that illustrates the, the way this document is marked up. So, and so it goes. I know that this sort of thing is, is new to a couple of you. And I'm happy to answer questions. If new commissioners would like maybe additional time to review this or talk it through with me, I'm happy to do that. At the, at the direction of the chair, I I guess I'll invite your questions initially.
So this executive search.
That's something. That has nothing about there.
Oh, we're not there yet.
We don't have the stock. These are on the rules. Page four, so what page would you be on? I'd be on page four. The first three pages are taken up as a title page and then the table of contents. So then it's actually number four, that's the first page of the text.
No, but that documents.
It just rules of operation for the board. And it just keeps getting pared down. Words get changed. They're taking out some language, putting some in, cleaning it up. And I think they've been cleaning it up pretty much every year, you know?
This year also given the changes in the Open Meetings Act about appearance by, by video by commissioners. That language has been updated or the language we had previously that served us during the COVID period has been taken out. So that is a change.
I have a question on page four. What about a one point three vacancy of office or in office? We have here this one sentence, removed from the district or removed from office shall be filled.
I'm sorry, where's that?
That's one point three.
Language by, this is statutory language.
Over here. I kind of skipped over here.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
The question is a length of official cannot, you cannot, what would you do? Vote a person off the board?
So it'd be by death, your resignation, your removal from the district. So if you moved from your district or removal from office for any other reason, there is statutory mechanism for commissioners to be removed by the governor. So that's not something we see very often. And Jan, this is statutory law.
This just talks about replacing that person. Any other thoughts on this?
I'll also add that this document does refer to the, it indicates that there are various things. We will file, follow the IRS mileage reimbursement rate. And that's something that gets changed at least once a year. So if you approve this document as written, you are approving the IRS mileage rate, which is sixty-five and a half cents per mile, though point six five five. But just so you have that information and know that you would be approving that as well.
Any thoughts on this? Any motion for this?
I move to approve.
I'll second that.
The move is supported. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This meeting scheduled for, is that in here, Jan? But it's the wrong dates.
I include the meeting schedule in the rules.
There should be another one.
I include the meeting in the rules of organization document, but you folks typically approve those at this meeting. So once you have a schedule approved, I will add it to the side. And that's for history.
There you go. Okay, I get it. But you all see the meeting dates is still the. You all have those. So we have to prove these separately? Are there any rules that are.
I add them to the rules of organization.
Okay.
Historically, Angie has asked that those be approved separately. And there are a couple of dates around elections and holidays that, and we'll talk about that issue as well.
And we've had those come up when there's an election on that Tuesday or whenever that we had to come before or after, whatever.
Right.
We just change it at that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, you actually, rules of organization specify how that should work, but we've deferred to Angie and her use on the elections.
Like, like Tim made reference to July 5th and if you, or July 4th, but if you notice on, on our dates, it's July, July 5th. If you, have you got that paper?
Well, that's, you're mixing topics. This is the meeting schedule, whereas Tim is wanting to talk about the holiday schedule.
No, he's talking about the meeting schedule to be on the six.
He's talking about a meeting, but Tuesday, the fourth is now Wednesday, the fifth.
I, I think so.
And I think, Tim, you, you want to have it on.
Well, yeah, Thursday, but I, I don't have strong feelings about it. I want to meet on Wednesday, the fifth. It's all right.
Normally what we do is we meet today following the holiday.
That's fine.
Yeah.
You know, that's something can be looked at at the time too. We have to change it. We have to have enough notice and stuff, but.
This is why, Angie, why you kept saying M two, M two.
I get you now. It's all right, all right.
Yeah. So you want to approve one, you say?
Yes, please.
We need to have a motion on this.
Motion, we go by the meeting date before us. Second.
It's been, motion been made in second in the hall. Any discussion on it? All in favor? Most, to pass. And now we hear it's the holiday schedule.
Holiday schedules.
Holiday.
This really is an FYI issue for you. This has been presented to you for approval in years past, but now this is an FYI because all of these holidays have been associated and are in the union contracts except POA and COA. And they're in the Grashit County policies, meaning that you have approved them in the past. So what this document does. Um, and they're in the Gracian County policies, meaning that you have approved them in the past. So what this document does is it just shows you what, how the dates would fall this particular year for the holidays that have been approved by every mechanism of approval in this county. So again, this is FYI, really doesn't require.
I I can't remember, what is it?
I don't know, June.
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth.
That's the new one.
Holiday, yeah.
That's the new one.
That's that's a new one.
It's the holiday.
That we got last year.
Really, and essentially the end of slavery, when news of the abolition of slavery finally reached the state of Texas and the slaves in Texas were finally freed. That's something that uh, last calendar year, uh, this board approved.
Well, we have half the courthouse working, well, it's state approved and I think.
Well, that's.
I I guess I'm not ready to make a motion, but uh. I wonder what you think about uh. Giving the employees uh. Uh, Monday, the third of July off. In addition to the fourth.
July.
You know, is that negotiated already or not?
No, neither one. That would just be for this year. Um, in twenty twenty four, the July fourth actually happens on Thursday and the year after that it happens on Friday. So I think that that would be something for this year only. Now, ordinarily, these things are negotiated with our unions, however. Um, I don't think a union is ever going to uh, say no. Outside for you as management, technically, um, this is kind of the purest negotiation thought, is you give something to staff without not negotiating anything in return. Um, if that sort of thing bothers you, but uh, because of the way the days fall, I think that would be just this year only. Uh, but you can.
I think good observation, do you? I think that's a good idea.
And a motion?
Yeah.
They don't, they they've stuck on Monday, that helps.
Yeah. Yeah, that gives them a good weekend. So. I'll make a motion that we uh. Allow the third of July off for holiday for them. How many employees?
Second.
Twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three, yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Host.
Motion carries.
I wouldn't point out that does not bind the courts. I'll certainly let Judge, uh, well, Jennifer Wood know and then she can distribute that word amongst court folks. Um.
Well, I I did a little check and that's uh, gonna cost us eighty five hundred dollars. But it's overtime for the shares.
Daily uh, rate for uh, salary only, not included benefits is about twenty eight thousand. Uh, however, we're paying that anyway. It's budgeted because whether uh, staff are here or not, they're getting paid either way. So yes, the true cost is the additional.
Basically baked into the budget.
Additional overtime.
Right. Holiday. That'll, but you'll have to.
And my guys, they get a one-time check once a year, so they don't get overtime on holidays.
Yeah, or they don't. This is based on so many hours and they just get a check.
Oh, yeah. And uh, bakery in September.
Lot simpler than that.
Yeah, that way I don't have to figure out who worked overtime on a holiday, who didn't. It's just all preset.
So we're to uh, N three, uh, this exec. And four? I marked it. Okay, we're to the executive search form that she just handed out.
I know, I understand that uh, last meeting, that you folks, and my copy, you folks um. And so I decided to um. Um, so with M M L to do uh, an executive recruitment, uh, this uh. On the announcement of my retirement, uh, executives on or about the last day of February. Um, I did make contact with M M L. Um, just heard back from them today, so I'm I'm sorry, I didn't get this on you, gentlemen. I know I'm sort of gonna be throwing a lot at you fairly uh, quickly here. And in fact, I've not really had time to do a deep review of this myself, however. Um, and though I don't know George and Sam, if this is the same, all of this, but there are tiers of services that you can um. Uh, retain M M L uh, for. And there is the typical service, there's enhanced services, that's all on the first page of the document I've given you. On the backside of page one, a two-sided button, it's seen two, there is a basic service. Then there are, there's a little menu, services that you can uh, add. Um, the next uh, single page, but on two pages, is simply a picture, uh, at which you can what services are included in each of these level services. Um. It, starting without anyone in here. Um. I've been through a few of these and you certainly want to be visited by your recruiter. You want someone to come and talk with you and you want someone to go through with you. What is it you really want? So that a few years later, you don't have someone saying, I aren't X, Y, and Z. Um. You uh. Yeah, so you want that. Then you want your recruiter to put together that nice glossy little description of the county, a recruitment document. Uh, did a nice job with it at the time that had the recruitment that resulted in my hire. And that's very standard practice. Um. You want the recruiter to advertise and to know where to advertise to reach folks that might be looking for these kinds of positions. To receive the applications, to do a screening for you. The schedule interviews. Now. Something I think is just not a bad idea and I I urge you to do this is also have your recruiter do a meeting with at least your department heads and your other elected officials. This is a position that works for everyone in this building, works for all of this, everyone in this building. There is also, you can do a community forum. I don't know that that's really necessary here, but that's something that you can do. You can have, I've been through a little um, uh, what I call a beauty pageant. You can have a uh, social event um. Where members of the community are invited to come and talk to all the candidates. Um. I don't know that you really want that either. Uh, since you can put word out that you are, you know, you're looking for input, feedback, it's a community hire, but that I don't think I am suggesting to you, I don't think you really want that elaborate process. So if you agree with what I've said, then you can look at this list of services and determine which of these um, uh, uh, does that for you. Um, if you look at the typical and enhanced services, they're going to give you the visits with the um, the recruiter. Um. Uh, enhanced involves a community roundtable, which again, I I'm just not sure that you really need. And an open house during the interview process. Again, I don't think you need that. If you agree, I would suggest to you that you can immediately eliminate this enhanced service level. Um, going back to typical. Up to four. Engagement of elected officials, dark Hartman's rats and staff. Um, I recommend you do that. I recommend you do that. Uh, third, third bullet, uh, extensive community profile and recruitment brochure. Again, you had, did do that last time. I think that's a very good tool. Um, advanced marketing, um, which is just a whole bunch of advertising, which is to pass your net um, widely. Um, doing the recruitment, um, a personal free screening of viable applicants. What that generally is, is um, they've uh, they've called the pile, went through the pile a bit, they'd see some that might look uh, attractive and they'll do usually they'll just do a real quick uh, telephone screening, uh, interview with candidates. From there, they learn some things. They might uh, eliminate uh, more uh, eliminate additional candidates, their recommendations to you. Uh, that's generally how that goes. And they'll do the reference checks, which believe me, you want someone else doing that. Um, they understand the legalities, frankly, of doing reference check and retaining the information that you receive. Um. They'll develop the interview questions that keeps you out of trouble. Um, and they will uh. Here they assist you with the conditional offer of employment. They'll do the background check and the contract negotiation. That's great. You haven't, we'll constantly do that sometimes in the past, but these folks, um, I'm, I I would feel perfectly comfortable having them do that. So those are, those are the things I can cover the bases, but. Let's flip over to the backside of that page, which I have numbered page two. And it's the basic service. That's just three visits with the recruiter. They'll give you the uh, recruitment brochure. They'll do just standard marketing and advertising. They'll do that free screening. They'll develop the interview questions and they'll do the background check. What they don't do there is they don't do the contract negotiation uh, and uh. Uh, do the conditional offer of employment. They don't do the uh, advanced marketing, which I think you need. Think you need advanced marketing. So. Having gone through those three options and you've heard I two cents both based on recruitment you didn't make and um. You know, this isn't my herd rodeo with these things. My recommendation to you is that you elect the typical service package. The package price that they're indicating is seventeen thousand dollars for members. You are a member. Um, but uh, if I would have marked all over Angie's sheet, um. I would, of course, work with M M L and see if we can trim that cost at all. Um, so what what this does and the reason I'm presenting this to you and uh, this evening is I know you want to get this thing going. And I I thought it might be your preference to have this underway, not have to wait two more weeks before we take the next step in getting this underway. So there's that piece while you're thinking. The fellow who did the recruitment for you last time is still on their staff list. It was Jerry Richardson. I think his name was Richardson. He's still there. Um, but his um, his uh, um. Portfolio is pretty busy. He would not be able to begin this with, well, maybe that word. Which I feel very sure that you want to start while that. So I could work with M M L to identify another recruiter. I don't think you care, other than Jerry's familiar, it was a Tony and it's, I think it's the same. Quickly, however, all of the folks on their list are very experienced recruiters. They've worked in local houses. They will have the brochure from the last recruitment, which would only be, be, be updated. I don't think there are that many changes. Um, so I would suggest to you that like any recruiter that might be able to get going uh, quickly should be acceptable. This, of course, is in part why you use M M L or N S C D hospitals, is they've done that spring. They offer folks that are qualified to do this work.
What does M M L stand?
Uh, Michigan Municipal League. It's an organization that provides sets of resources to cities, but also counties. Uh, they have very, they're very rich in in resources of uh, forms and area services, including this is. Sorry, Tom.
Well, the way we left the meeting last time was I had brought up that we ought to start looking at this. We've not really said we're gonna do this with these folks. Um, I, you know, it's. I think the time that we went through it before, when we hired Tracy, they brought three or four candidates to us. They kind of screened them all out. Um, they they were people who were interested in coming. We got to meet with them. Uh, we met with the recruiter, you know, talked to them beforehand. I just think it's versus us trying to just put an add in the paper and take applicants. I just think this is a better way to go. It's it's a big operation here and you know, and you look at seventeen thousand, whether we can trim it down or not, I really think this is probably the way to go to do this. And I think probably we try to start on this sooner than later, uh, it's going. At the end of February is gonna come through. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that or.
It worked well for us the last time.
Yeah. You guys have any thoughts on that? I mean, I know you're just coming and now you're gonna hire.
I think, I think we should take our time.
But we'll have a lot of time.
Deadlines.
They'll have no deadline on this. It'll be a situation to where they would give up the speed, bring us stuff. It would really, our our timeline, we would hire when we're ready to hire and we want to pick the right candidate they brought. I just think they can bring us better qualified candidates who would apply for.
One thing's for sure, we can go through and interview them and if we are happy with that.
Oh, yeah, we're not locked in anyone. Yeah.
I do know a couple of people that I've been touched to. That may be interested, so I'm gonna.
So they would just apply through, you know, these folks.
I I think this is a, it was gonna be a good time for self-reflection and positioning. And what we know. What a new person before we hire a new person, we should.
And we'll have plenty of time to do that, Tim, with these folks, because they'll come and talk to us about. You know, what are we thinking? What do we need? You know, what do we think we need different than we have? Is there anything different we could do? That type of thing. They'll have, we'll have a lot of options.
And like after Tracy leaves, uh, and we'll examine, you know, who kind of takes her place or who does extra work. I I imagined it'll be a burden and somebody or a group of people. And and we could reflect on that and just how they did and and things of that nature.
First of all, you gotta have a timeline. You gotta move this thing along. Um. This is a busy position. Um, but how how the transition might go, having an acting or an interim and how you might want to handle that, really is a separate discussion. Um, and I think one that we have after we get this thing launched and underway. It's all part of the process, but there are pieces of it.
Well, I believe that this is probably the way to go for us to get started and uh, you know, we'll have, well, this is not working out. I heard hiring anybody in two weeks. It's it's gonna be a process. It'll be months, you know.
Oh, it was, it was like three months or so.
Yeah, it took us.
It took us quite a while.
Yeah, it took us quite a while. It wasn't just like, oh, here's, they brought Charlie and we hired for Tracy.
What are you gonna tell you is you didn't have an administrator. We started this process last time and that I think it could be helpful. Now, it may take you three months.
Yeah.
But you know, you've got someone here locally and if not be, then you've got an H R officer for the time being. And uh, so you have resources now you didn't have.
M M, M M L will actually come in and interview us to see our thoughts.
Yeah.
That's.
Or they even, before they even start to look for anybody. So it's gonna be a well done.
You're typical.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I and I think we do, gotta do the typical.
It's the best way to go.
Who we get started on this?
With the typical package, Ben?
With the typical package.
Yeah, I'll support it.
Moving, supported to uh, look at hiring M M L from the typical package here. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Host. Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, I'm at.
Write a window of price down a little bit, it'll be great.
See what I can do.
Any other unfinished business? Uh, additional public comment? Anybody here? Any comments? Matt?
Nobody online right now for public comment.
So, but we can do.